Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, Tumwater City Council. Hopefully, everyone had a great holiday, and we're back at it again. So with that, I will call the meeting to order and start off with roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahoff?
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson?
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy?
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout?
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser?
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabi?
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz?
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan?
And I'm present. Councilmember Swarthout will lead us in our pledge.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, then, we do not have any special items this evening. So the next item is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? No one signed up? Do we have anyone online signed up? Okay, so then we will go into the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved?
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councilmember Althouser, seconded by Councilmember Swarthout. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, the consent calendar has been approved. With that, we have approved the minutes for the city council meeting of November 19th, the minutes for the city council meeting of December 3rd, payment vouchers, contract between the City of Tumwater and Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife for the Phase 4 Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan, HCP grant, service provider agreement with HDR Engineering for On-Call Engineering Services, amendment number one, service provider agreement with PBS Engineering for the Percival Creek Fish Passage Barrier Removal Project, amendment four. Excuse me. All right, I'm trying to get over a bug. So acceptance of a work for the Reed Trucking and Escavation Incorporated on Israel Road in Linderson Way, acceptance of the work with Specialty Payment Marketing LLC for the 2024 Citywide Stripping Project, and exception to the residency requirements for Dave Shipley, who is appointed to the Historic Commission. And so with that, we will move into council considerations. The first item is a service provider agreement with the Thurston County Regional Planning Council for the HCP land capacity update. And Brad, I believe you're doing this.
Yes. Welcome to 2025. Thank you for all coming tonight to your meeting, I guess. We have a couple of items to start off with that would typically have gone through the General Government Committee process before coming under the consent calendar. So the first item, as the mayor mentioned, is a service provider agreement with TRPC to do a land capacity analysis in support of the HCP. As you may, hopefully not. Five years ago, we did a land capacity analysis with basically, for the next 30 years, determining the level of growth in the city and how much land we would potentially need to cover as part of the HCP. We are updating the HCP currently. We hope to have a draft this spring, early this spring, available to the public. And as part of that process, we're updating that portion of the work, and this particular agreement is to cover that portion of the work. The request tonight is for the council to approve the mayor's signature on this, and so we can move forward with the work and have that come out.
All right, is there any questions? Okay, did I hear a motion? Councilmember Althouser?
Thanks, Mayor. I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the service provider agreement to the Thurston Regional Planning Council for the HCP land capacity analysis update.
And I second. It has been moved by Councilmember Althouser, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries. And I take it, Brad, you're going to be doing the next one, which is a service provider agreement with Thurston Regional Planning Council for Land Use Alternatives Review.
Correct. This next service provider agreement, again, is with TRPC, and it is to help us work on the comprehensive plan update, specifically in the land use element. What we've asked TRPC to put together is to run some models based on development potential, primarily driven by, pardon me, different residential densities in the city. That will in turn inform what are ultimately our land use designations and our zoning will be looking like. Again, this is a fairly short turnaround item, following the same process as the one that preceded this. Again, the request is for the council to approve this for signature by the mayor.
All right, any questions? All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll move to authorize the mayor to sign this service provider agreement with the Thurston Regional Planning Council for Land Use Alternatives Review.
And I second. Been moved by Councilmember Von Holtz and seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you. All right, next item is the interlocal agreement with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tenino, and Thurston County to support implementation of the 2025 Energize Thurston Heat Pump Group Purchasing Campaign. And welcome.
Hello. Could you please put up the presentation? Thank you. All right, and I have one presentation tonight for two items that require two separate actions. The actions are requested at the end, so just keep that in mind that they're combined but separate. Thank you. Right, so Energize Thurston has a number of goals, and I wanted to highlight just four here, is that it is an education campaign to raise awareness on the benefits related to health, climate, and economic benefits of building electrification, to prioritize program benefits to low and moderate income households, to install, to tangibly do climate action that we can touch and put a sticker on for home electrification and efficiency improvements in homes, and to maintain program flexibility as changes may happen regionally, state, or federally related to clean energy and building electrification. So I could have started this with like one of those murder maps of like the pieces of paper with the strings tied and getting really confused, but I calmed down and tried to think about it maybe as lasagna. So there's lots of moving pieces, but it all comes together to be this delicious thing that will benefit all of our residents. So excuse my metaphor here, but the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan serves as the cheese, the binding agent. Funding is the meat lentils or spinach of the lasagna. The multiple regional jurisdictions is the pasta itself that each has all the layers, but gets baked together for everybody to enjoy. The South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity is the sauce that everybody gets, and it wouldn't be lasagna without sauce. The HVAC and heat pump hot water heater installers are the oven, which makes it actually edible and work. And then the residents, we invite to eat the lasagna. And there's different pathways for the residents to be engaged with the Energize Thurston lasagna. And I'm pretty sure none of the other jurisdictions are going to try to use a food metaphor for this, but I couldn't help myself. So there are different pathways for residents. One is a low to moderate income pathway, and another is a self-funded pathway for people that are above 120% area median income. They all, all the different pathways, get to benefit from free educational workshops. It's actually required for participation. They get guidance on additional incentives, streamlined installation, and customer support. But the main difference is, for the low to moderate income pathway, the installations are either fully or partially subsidized and turnkey. So South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity will go into the home, work with the installer, make those improvements directly. And for the self-funded pathway, basically, they get a negotiated discount, and they can work with the installer to use that discount and work on that in their own home, on their own schedule, without South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity. Okay. Is the mic, okay. So for the fully subsidized pathway, they need to make 79% area median income or below, and that would be a full cost coverage for the equipment. And we're reserving at least 60% of the grant funds that are funding this program for low income specifically. The partially subsidized pathway, which would be the rest of the grant funding, we would expect a minimum household contribution of up to $2,500 or 20% of the project costs. This is usual for South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity to have an investment from the homeowner to be part of it. And also, working with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity, it's helpful for them to continue to use their same model, but we opted to have a more subsidized opportunity for the lowest income clients. So this is the non-lasagna version. Lasagna is nicer to look at, I think. So Thurston County is the lead jurisdiction for Energize Thurston. They will contract with the installers and this customer support consultant that will help answer questions about home electrification, especially for those self-funded pathways, for people that are going about this and don't have someone holding their hand and doing it for them, to provide some guidance on how to go about that. Each jurisdiction will contract separately with Habitat for Humanity, which will lead the program for the partially and fully subsidized clients. And then the self-funded folks will work directly with the installers, and the jurisdictions through Thurston County will negotiate those discounts that everyone will be able to use, that also leverage every single incentive, tax rebate, anything that could lower the price in addition to the discount that we're hoping to negotiate with the installers. And also, the self-funded pathway, they'll have a choice of three different installers. So if they don't want to work with one, but they want to work with another, they have the opportunity of choice. And the folks going through Habitat will have that choice as well. So the Energize Thurston program will cover two different kinds of equipment, heat pumps for space heating and cooling, and heat pump hot water heaters. Now, this is based off of the Energize Olympia program, which currently only does ductless heat pumps. So this is an expanded version done regionally, where we will work with ducted or ductless. Our grant funding requires that we use cold climate heat pumps that will continue to heat a space efficiently and not need any supplemental heating when it's super cold outside, like 20 degrees or less. All equipment needs to meet efficiency standards like Energy Star or above. If we need to do an electrical panel upgrade for the homeowner to make it so that we can make these improvements, that will also be included. And duct sealing, if needed, for a ducted system that's being installed. For heat pump hot water heaters, needs to meet efficiency standards. And again, we'll upgrade the electrical panel in the home if we need to. So the services provided by Tumwater and this large regional lasagna is that we will utilize our Commerce Here funding towards subsidized installations of heat pumps and/or heat pump hot water heaters for income-qualified participants. We will execute a contract with the LMI Pathway Administrator, which will be the second action. That's the South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity Service Provider Agreement. And we will hold primary responsibility for case management for Energize Thurston participants who reside in Tumwater. So I'll make sure that I work with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity and the installers in the county to make sure everything is running smoothly and make sure our residents are taken care of. So the applicant process is that they will sign up to attend a campaign workshop to learn about the program and about what heat pumps are, and make sure that that's what they want. They will submit a campaign application that includes some general information, including if they decide that they want to go through the funded pathway. If they are income-qualified, they'll let us know that we'll reach out for income verification information. So we will verify site eligibility, which means we'll make sure their address is in Tumwater. And then South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity will verify income information. That's helpful for public records to make sure that we're not getting people's bank information or social security numbers that then could be requested in a public records thing. We want to protect identities. So that will go through our South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity. They will verify income and keep all of those records if we need them. The staff will provide the participant with status updates and notify them, the installer, that they're ready for the site assessment, so the site visit to talk about the equipment. And if they're going in the low to moderate income pathway, the installer will work with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity to schedule that site assessment. They'll get a quote, they'll hopefully approve the quote, and then South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity will be the kind of the project manager for getting that work done in that home. For the self-funded pathway, they'll go through all of the application steps, and then the installer will contact the participant to schedule the site assessment, get a quote. The resident will maybe approve that quote, and they will contract directly, the installer and the resident, directly. I feel like there was a slide that I missed that was important. Maybe it's in the future. Funding, all of this is covered by a grant from the Department of Commerce that is funded by the Climate Commitment Act. So we have $477,540. We have the ability to spend up to 15% of that on administrative costs, which we have split into the cost for South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity to manage that part of the program, and the campaign administration shared expenses that are described in the ILA, which are mostly getting the word out about the program. And that will leave $408,485 for those direct installations in those homes. I'm hopeful that we can get between 20 and 40 homes taken care of with that money. At least 60% of the funding, like I said, will go towards the fully subsidized installations. That's the low-income clients. And partially subsidized installations, again, up to 20%, up to $2,500 per household. This is the slide I was looking for. All right, the program will carry out subsidized installations on a first-come, first-served basis, and I already have a small waiting list. So four homes, six housing trust units, and a representative from an entire manufactured home park has reached out already about participating in this program. So a lot of the, if they are all qualified, they go through the application process. We have a lot of the 20, 40 homes already, maybe all 40 if the entire manufactured home park qualifies. But we still want to get the word out, and a pool of people that we know are already qualified, that we already have information, contact information from the city, is the 191 Lifeline customers who use our utility Lifeline program. Those are already income-qualified, and we know that they live in Tumwater, so that's a good pool to reach out to. And we will be doing targeted outreach to them, as well as general outreach for everyone, to make sure that even those who are doing a self-funded pathway know that there's an opportunity to do this work in their home, get a discount, and have a streamlined process. Right, moving on to the second item, and I'll get to the actions here shortly. This is a shorter part. This is the service provider agreement with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity. They will be the low to moderate income program administrator, so they will administer the campaign. They will do the income verification and customer support. They will oversee equipment installation and quality assurance. They will do progress reports, which are essentially exactly what we need to give to the grantor. And they will do community outreach and education. Staff, the installers, and South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity will be at those workshops that people have to go to in order to participate in the program. And I forgot to mention earlier that those workshops will be available on demand, online, or in person, and we're already working on translation services to make sure that at least one of those, probably the one that's on demand, is available in Spanish at least. So again, the murder map of stuff, I don't need to describe this again, but murder map's not a good way to describe it. The lasagna that looks less delicious. So I have the two recommended actions. The first one is authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement with Thurston County, City of Lacey, City of Olympia, City of Tumwater, and City of Tenino to support implementation of the 2025 Energize Thurston Heat Pump Group Purchase Campaign. And I'll pause.
Councilmember Althouser?
Thanks. I mostly have questions about money. So most of the grants, like the lion's share of the grants are funded by the CCA, correct? Which is state dollars?
100% of the funding for this, for Tumwater. Other jurisdictions have EECBG money from the federal government, but we were too small to benefit from that.
Okay. So if the other jurisdictions, like I imagine the county gets money that way, and so does Olympia and Lacey. So if federal funding changes, and we sort of lose some economy, do we lose economies of scale to where the program as a whole sort of enters jeopardy? Or like, is, I guess if this ILA is an agreement between the jurisdictions to work together, how does that sort of complicate a picture? Do we have, does the severability clause kind of cover a situation like that, where if we would be unable to deliver the services because we become less effective because we lose the federal funding, what happens?
No. For Tumwater, because each jurisdiction is contracting directly with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity, that makes it so that we can manage our own funds independently of the other jurisdictions. Also, the EECBG funding only will fund heat pump hot water heaters because of the ground disturbance concepts for a heat pump. So the worst thing that could happen is that the other jurisdiction, larger jurisdictions, will get less hot water heaters.
Okay. And for the one that's not income verified, for the self-funded pathway, it didn't look like any of the funding was allocated to that one. Is that just because really the only expense is staff time to organize it? Because there isn't actually a financial subsidy going for that if you're not income-qualified?
Yes. The only staff time that really goes to that is making sure that they're not left off or forgotten by the installer, and making sure that the case management still goes through. But the discount that they get is from the installer, so it's whatever group purchase discount that they decide to provide. There was no funding going towards that because the grant funds could only be used. We could have maybe given a subsidy for 120 to 150 area median income, but we decided to utilize the majority, all of the money for a lower income. Also, the Energize Olympia program worked to 120%. There's a couple other programs that go to 120%, so it was just more streamlined to go in that manner.
My last question. So if we do the case management on this, is that what the administrative expenses are going towards? Is the staff cost for us to do that, or is that part of our in-kind staff contribution?
In-kind staff time.
Okay.
Yep, the administrative cost is mostly the outreach education, buying banners that we're going to put up, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Radio ads.
Any other questions? I have, Councilmember Swarthout?
Thank you. So looking at your lasagna, so we've got $408,485 in, of lasagna. So we're all, so all the jurisdictions, we're all going after the same?
This is Tumwater-specific money.
Okay.
We get that much.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that came across, so I just want to be sure that that's, yeah, that's very much Tumwater-specific.
Yep.
So that's really, okay, good. I think that's what really, and then I'm just curious how we'll be able to, because we know, we've seen some of these quotes and things like that, so I'm just curious how many jobs we'll actually be able to get done. So hopefully, we'll see some economy of scale and some savings.
Yeah. We have, and I take direction for this. I might have a different approach to this than you may want me to have. My thought is I want to fully help as many households as I can, more so than have more households partially helped. So if a household needs a hot water heater and a new heat pump, I want to be able to provide both. But if the council's direction is that you want more homes to get something as opposed to less homes getting everything, I can tell South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity to go in that manner. I just want to benefit people as much as they can. That's my perspective. But if you would like to have higher numbers of the people in the households that are benefit, I can, I can change directions.
It would be interesting to see, once it is launched, the number of, because you already have people that are signed up, then how much work we can get done at that point, to see how far we can, with that intention of wanting to do everything correctly upfront, we'll be able to identify how many other people are still out there that would like to be served as well, then?
And the intention is, we have the money for one year, that we know, but the Climate Commitment Act is still standing, and Commerce hasn't told us if this funding will be available for multiple years. But the work has been put in place to make it possible for this to be a multi-year or continual program if the funding allows. So we may learn from this experience and decide to do a couple things differently next year if there is funding provided by Department of Commerce for this.
All right, any other questions? Do you want to go back to the motion part?
Yes, I'll go to the first motion of two.
All right, so this is going, even though it's one presentation, it's two separate motions. So do I have anyone to make the motion? Councilmember Althouser?
Thanks. I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement with Thurston County, City of Lacey, City of Olympia, and City of Tenino to support implementation of the 2025 Energize Thurston Heat Pump Group Purchase Campaign.
I'll second, this is Leeta.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Althouser, seconded by Councilmember Dahoff. Any discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And then we're going to have the second part of this.
Yes.
Who would like to make the motion? Councilmember Swarthout?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to authorize the mayor to sign, or I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the service provider agreement with the South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity for the Energize Thurston 2025 Program Administration via council consideration.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Yay.
It's exciting.
Yes, it's very exciting. The last thing in our council considerations is transportation benefit district briefing. And, ah. How are you?
Well, good evening, Mayor Sullivan and council members. For those in the audience and online, I am Brandon Hicks, the Transportation and Engineering Director for the city. I'm here to give an informational briefing on the transportation benefit district in anticipation of a 2025 renewal, if approved by council and voters. A couple things I want to note before I begin. I'm probably not going to say transportation benefit district one more time in this meeting. It'll be TBD, so please just be prepared for that. The other one I want to point out is, this presentation is probably not going to be up to my normal standards. I had some travel issues coming back into the country. Half-day flights took a couple days, so I'm lacking sleep. I do have a couple colleagues that I've promised that they'll come up and poke me with a stick or kick me if I start to fall asleep. And then some other colleagues are willing to jump in and answer questions if I don't know the answers. I also wanted to point out, when I saw on the agenda that I had to follow up Brad and Alyssa, I wanted to crawl in a hole or... They're easily two of the best presenters at the city, and I want to just let all my colleagues know that I think you're good, too. They're hard to beat. There we go. I have just a general outline of what I'll be touching on today on the screen. There's many more items that we could talk about, but this is just for this initial briefing. Going to go over some basic facts about the TBD, the history of the TBD in Tumwater, some of the accomplishments that we have been able to achieve with the TBD funding, and then next steps for this process of attempting a renewal of the TBD. Okay, so first of all, what is a TBD? It is a quasi-municipal corporation, an independent quasi, quasi, taxing district created for the sale, sole purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, providing, and funding transportation improvements within the district. And the TBD is governed by RCW 36.73 and Tumwater Municipal Code 12.42. You're also seeing me cheat and looking. There are two main funding options that are typically used by agencies, and they include the sales tax, which is what we use, and a vehicle license fee. There are several other options, but they are all seldomly used. So generally speaking, you're only going to see a sales tax or the vehicle license fees for most agencies in the state. Again, the city selected the sales tax option for two main reasons. I would say one of them being that it did provide the most funding for our needs. But probably the biggest one is that it takes the burden of paying for the city's roadway system off of just taxpayers and residents of Tumwater, and spreads it out to a lot of folks who come here to shop. So it sort of makes it more equitable for people who use our roadway system. The tax option may not be imposed for more than 10 years, and renewal of the tax requires going back to the voters for reapproval. going back to the voters for reapproval. And the tax in Tumwater was first implemented in 2015, and it will be expiring this year. There are two things that I really need to stress on the screen here, and I'm probably going to state it a few times as I come for many more presentations, and they are that this is not a sales tax increase. This is a renewal of a current 0.2% portion of the sales tax that is used to fund TBD projects. So, renewal will not change this current sales tax rate in Tumwater. The other is that, as I briefly mentioned on the last slide, the 0.2% portion of the current sales tax used to fund the TBD ensures that all people who use our road system to shop in Tumwater pay a fair portion of the road system that they're using. TBD is a very commonly used and popular funding mechanism for roadway maintenance throughout the state. In fact, there are over 116 cities in Washington that have formed TBDs, and the majority of those were funded with the sales tax option. There are five counties who have formed TBDs, but only one is funded, so it's a little bit less supported. And then, since 2011, over 90% of the ballot measures for cities using the sales tax option have been approved by voters. So, it is an extremely popular funding mechanism specifically for the benefits and equity that's provided. So, why was the TBD established? As you can probably guess, it's strictly based on aging infrastructure and maintenance of it in Tumwater. All of our roadway systems are aging. A lot of the roads that we have here are quite old. We're a proud city that's been around for a long time, but that also means that we have a lot of infrastructure that is aging significantly more than some of our neighboring Transportation infrastructure is one of the city's most valuable investments, and deferred maintenance drives repair costs higher. State and federal funding for maintenance and preservation of city streets has been reducing, and while these revenues have decreased, costs have gone way up for maintenance. So, a little bit on Tumwater TBD. It was originally established in 2014, and then it was first funded in 2015. The TBD has added a tremendous amount of funding for street maintenance within the city. In fact, since it was originally established, since the funding was established, it has generated more than $19.2 million in revenue, and it's going to likely exceed $20 million in revenue by the time it expires in 2015, if it is not renewed, or by the time it does get renewed. I also want to point out that those funds have been used to leverage more than $6 million in grant funds, and I can sincerely say that that number would be significantly larger if we haven't had so many staffing issues in the department. It's just hard to keep and hire engineers these days. So, we all but stopped seeking some of the transportation grants, and I briefed y'all on that a couple years ago. But we do hope to get up to full staff, and if the TBD is renewed, that number should be quite, quite a bit larger in the next 10 years. So, just a little bit about the general concept of pavement preservation, mainly why you want to try to maintain streets up above a certain level. The main fact of the matter is, is that if you maintain streets while they're still in acceptable or good condition, it saves a lot of money in the long run. On this slide here, unfortunately, I put in an arrow that sort of struck out the costs that are shown on the right of the screen, because those are old costs. But generally speaking, spending a dollar above that first cartoonish hand figure, it saves you six to 14 times that amount if you go below. And once you go down below that first hand figure, it drops off quickly.
We have a lot of roads in the poor condition or unacceptable condition.
So, we, I believe it's about 11% of our roads are down below that, and quite frankly, it was lower than that when the TBD was originally funded. I may try to go over that concept more in future meetings, but the general point is, is that while, while a lot of our roads have gone from the lower end of good to very good because they're brand-new, what is hard for some folks to understand is that while we're making the improvements on those roads, all of the other good roads are slowly deteriorating. And so, a lot of those go down below the line. And so, as people drive through Tumwater and they see, quite frankly, how great our roads are, because we've got, we've got a roadway system to be proud of. But while we see things improving, everything that's good is slowly getting worse. So, even with this current funding, our overall roadway system is slowly getting lower and lower, and we make up that gap through capital construction projects and single-point-large projects.
Thank you very much.
Of course. So, on this slide, I've got a few of the accomplishments that the TBD has made possible over the last 10 years. We have done maintenance on more than 100 lane miles of road within Tumwater, and that is, that is more than 40% of our entire roadway system. We have, I want to say it's about 130 centerline miles. So, 100 lane miles, that is, that is a huge feat. And to do that, it's included more than 50,000 tons of asphalt. I forget how many tons of chip seal, but it's a substantial number as well. We've been able to replace more than 100 curb ramps, making all of our, a good portion of our sidewalk system more accessible for all users. There's been over 38,000, it says feet of pavement marking. I guess that probably is right. We've been able to do over 38,000 feet of pavement markings, making it safer for people to drive on our roads. And that does not include a couple current and upcoming projects that are funded by the TBD, and that includes the project that is mostly complete right here in front of City Hall, the Israel Road Improvements. And that TBD funds there, leverage significant grant funding. The Linwood Avenue Sidewalk Project that is at Michael T. Simmons that we're going to pause for weather and pick back up in April. That is also, we received a significant amount of grant funding using TBD dollars. Doesn't show it on here, but we also have the Second Avenue Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvements, and that includes around about at the intersection of Second Avenue and Linwood, full repaving from Linwood all the way nearly to Old Town Center, and then new curb ramps through the whole stretch. That also, we were able to leverage a couple million dollars in grant funding for that project using TBD funds. And then, we're also currently in design for next year's pavement maintenance project, and that'll probably be about, it'll be a good-sized one, maybe three or four million On the screen, I mean, I could put up hundreds of photos of some of the work that's been done with the TBD. We've been going through the process with our annual report every year, so I know that y'all could go online and look at our annual reports. There's pictures everywhere. But here's just a couple examples of roadways that were largely rebuilt, and we really could not have done that without this funding source. So, there are many steps over the next few months as we try to go through the renewal process for the TBD. I have just a couple of the main ones on the screen, and I'm guessing that Karen's looking at this and going, Brandon, you're missing a lot here. But this is just a little tidbit of what I wanted to highlight today. I will be coming back to the city council work session next week. I'm going to touch on some of the great points that Councilmember Jefferson and Swarthout brought up at Public Works Committee, so don't, don't think that I've forgotten those, so we'll get a look at it. And I'll talk about some of the required pieces of legislation, legislation, including a resolution anticipation of the election in April. The deadline for council to submit the resolution to the county to start the process of getting TBD renewal measure on the ballot is February 21. And then, there is, there is a lot of ongoing coordination specifically with the communications team on trying to put together facts about the TBD, make sure that folks in the city understand what it is, what it's used for. It's going to be strictly factual largely for most of this. Well, it'll all be factual, but what I'm saying is, is we're not going to be lobbying for it. We're just putting out what it is and letting them have good information before they make a decision. And then, again, there are many, many more steps. These are just some of the key ones I wanted to highlight. And then, with that, that's all I have tonight. Again, y'all are going to hear a lot about this from me over the next couple of months. And with that, I would be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Any councilmembers, Swarthout?
Thank you for your presentation. So, just, just the briefing, appreciate that. Other jurisdictions, Olympia, did they finally, and Lacey, did they finally do TBDs? Because I know we were the only ones.
So, Lacey has the sales tax TBD, just like the city does. Olympia was the vehicle license fee.
They were doing the vehicle license, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah. And so, even though Olympia has a pretty substantial higher population than, than the city of Tumwater, our revenue is significantly larger for TBD just because of the funding source. And like, as I tried to describe earlier, it is, it is definitely a lot more fair to the residents.
It's fairly seamless when you do it that way. So, and last year, did we do any paving? Because I thought with everything else that was going on, we kind of put a pause on, we had some big, huge projects going on, that we'll be looking at 2025 and really gearing up for...
Correct. We didn't do a pavement maintenance-only project, so it wasn't just our typical pavement maintenance project, but the Israel Road project in front of us was, all the paving on that was TBD-funded. We were able to complete some design on a couple of projects that were TBD-funded. We started the Linwood Avenue project, which is TBD-funded. So, even though it doesn't look like we went out and did a paver, there was a lot of TBD work done.
Yeah. Last year was a big year. My other question, then, I know you, there was, you have a plan, and you showed like the little areas, like the roads that are going to be addressed in some of the neighborhoods, and so is that, are you going to, will that still be accurate? Are you going to go back and look at that again? Because I'm just curious about trying to engage our HOAs and our, you know, our neighborhoods to let them know that, hey, you know, you're on the, you're going to be, you're on the, you're on the list.
So, maybe just, just to touch on that, I was not going to be doing this presentation. The, the two people who have been involved with the pavement maintenance program are no longer with the city, so I had to jump in, what, on my way back from vacation. So, what I will do is I'm going to pick up what they started, which includes the map, specifically the one that we brought to the voters in 2015, just to show, promises made, promises kept. But that's, that's been our, like, that's what we live by, and so, we're going to do that. Also, going to have, some point in the near future, the, the projects that we anticipate we would do if, if there is another renewal. Something that I, that I want to stress is that it is important to me and to, really to everybody who works for the city or represents the city, that we don't put out something and then not meet that commitment. So, it's, it's probably only going to show the major projects that we're certain are going to happen, with the caveat that there's going to be a lot of things that you're not seeing that's going to happen, and some just may not happen because they may deteriorate slower than we anticipated.
Well, I know you've been able to do some negotiating, too, like with the county, and we were able to double the amount of paving projects we were able to do because we were able to partner with them one year, and so, I know you're really clever in spreading the money out and getting a lot...
Yeah. Yeah. So, when I was at the county, I actually managed the division that, that did the pavement maintenance program, so I do have a good relationship with the folks over there, and we are planning on trying to partner as much as we can. Unfortunately, we're usually doing design and preparation and bid at different times, so it's been very difficult. But I know that both sides have desire to try to coordinate that. Economy's of scale, that's what it's about.
It's been a good, it's been a good program. It really has been. I think the Tumwaters definitely benefited from it.
All right. Any other questions? So, we will be hearing more about this for next couple of meetings, so, and then hopefully have this all on the ballot. Is this also going to be another 10-year TBD?
That is, that is our hope. Yeah. It is 10 years when you, when you go for the sales tax option.
Yeah. And I was assuming that, but I wanted to make sure I, I understood that. All right. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. And I will commit to trying to get more sleep before this...
All right.
You did great. Thank you.
I think you did well for Jetlag. All right. Next item on our agenda is committee reports, public health and safety. Councilmember Agabi.
So, thank you, Mayor. Meetings on January 14th in the future. And for calendar item, I have early RMS contract with a 265 law for RMS slash GMS, and then agreement with the city of Olympia for the fire department vehicle repair and maintenance services. Those had to be agenda items. So, the first one's got Chief Wicks' name, so I don't know if that is going to be happening for Chief Wicks' sake, right? So, the first item on our calendar is, is being presented by Chief Wicks, and is out, and meeting is out.
The, the first item on the agenda, the LRS update, that actually is going to move forward. So, it was the item related to body worn cameras, the update on the implementation plan that will be on the February agenda.
Okay. So, those are the two items.
Great. Thank you. General Government Committee, Councilmember Althausen.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee has not met since our last council meeting, but we are meeting tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. We have two items on our agenda. We will continue our discussion of the 2025 comprehensive plan, and we'll be focusing on the climate element tomorrow, which is very fitting, given our action earlier this evening. And then, we will also be discussing some ordinance code amendments in the general commercial mixed-use area about incentivizing some density requirements.
Great. Thank you. Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. We had, did not meet during the break, but we will be meeting on Thursday at 8 o'clock, Brandon, and so, you'll be up bright and early. So, we'll be, we have an ILA with the cities of Olympia, Lacey, and Thurston County implementing a regional environmental education program. We will be talking about the right-of-entry agreement for Barn League Management, and then an MOU between the city of Tumwater and Lot Clean Water Alliance regarding the purchase and sale agreement for properties in the Deschutes Valley, amendment number two. So, that will be on our calendar this Thursday at 8:00 a.m.
Great. Thank you. Budget and Finance has not met since the last time we met. However, we're going to, we're working on scheduling monthly Budget and Finance Committee meetings, so I don't believe those have been set yet, so we're working on setting that schedule. Then, we will move to Mayor-City Administrator Report, and we'll start out with Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I hope you had a wonderful holiday season, and I'm glad to see you all here to start off the new year. So, just a couple of general updates for the public. All of this information is on our website. I encourage people to take advantage of that opportunity and check out our social media pages. We do a good job of trying to provide good information about the things that we have available for our community. But in particular, I wanted to point out that we actually are having free holiday tree recycling right now. Our transportation operations crews do a free pickup service to help assist residents with recycling their Christmas trees. So, from January 6th through the 20th, residents can place undecorated, fresh Christmas trees behind the curb near their closest main intersection. They ask that you remove all of the tree stands, ornaments, decorations, lights, et cetera. Artificial trees will not be accepted, and they are encouraging people to keep sidewalks, bike lanes, and roadways clear. It may take several days to collect all of these, but we are more than happy to provide this service to our community. If you have any questions, you can contact our operations staff, and the website has a phone number for you to utilize. Next, one of our big projects this year is our community center design project. So, next Monday, January 13th... year is our community center design project. So next Monday, January 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Tom Water Middle School Cafeteria, the second workshop of that effort is going to take place. The agenda for that evening is to review some of the public feedback that we've already received from the first workshop, as well as the recent community survey that we conducted related to this project. The consultants are going to provide some preliminary building programming, as well as project budget. And then there will also be some review of the preferred community center sites that have been evaluated. And of course, there's an opportunity to provide public comment and ask lots of questions. So if you have any questions about that, you're encouraged to contact our Parks and Rec staff. And again, our website has those phone numbers and email addresses for people to be able to make those contacts. And then a couple of fun things that we've done so far. Today, we actually welcomed a group of firefighter paramedics. There were 10 of them. This is an important milestone towards full implementation of Tom Water's commitment to Medic One to support the new Medic Eight unit that is supposed to be fully operational by January 1 of 2026. Chief Hurley and Chief Crimmens and the people that have been supporting them in their department, as well as in our HR department, were able to accomplish a very difficult task of recruiting and hiring individuals into, in a really short timeline, and in a very competitive hiring environment. So kudos to everyone who has worked so hard to ensure that we had all 10 of those people on board. The next step is those people will be beginning the Advanced Life Support Academy that Medic One is going to be putting on for these folks. That actually starts this week. It takes a total of six weeks. And then after that, five of them are actually entry level positions, and so those five will be attending the Fire Academy for the next 12 weeks. And that means that we were actually able to hire some lateral positions, which saves us some money in terms of paying for the cost of those Fire Academies. This actually represents a significant new chapter in an already historic collaboration in Thurston County. Medic One is recognized as the first countywide publicly funded tiered EMS response system in the nation. They just celebrated 50 years of existence in 2024. So we're really proud to be a proactive partner in supporting that great service for not just our city of Tom Water residents, but all of Thurston County. And then I just wanted to provide an update on some, provide some clarification. So the council was, has been aware that we've been working on workforce planning at the city of Tom Water. We started that early in 2024. That process resulted in several budget requests made of council, and we're grateful for the council's support of our initiatives. That workforce planning is ongoing. And part of the reason that we are, part of the purpose of that work is to make sure that we're providing good, consistent service across our different departments, and to provide some consistency in naming conventions, and in understanding positions, and in personnel policies and those types of things. So one of the first things that we did, which was actually a component of your budget adoption process, in addition to the market rate increase and the, for nonrepresented staff and the added new positions, was that we took our first step towards a consistent naming convention for our positions. And the first step was that in our organizational charts within our different departments, several of our departments have what we've previously called Assistant Director positions. Those are positions that are directly underneath the department director that assists that department director with all the activities of those departments. So we have converted the name of those positions from Assistant Director to Deputy Director. This includes four different existing positions, the Deputy Finance Director, the Deputy Transportation and Engineering Director, the Deputy Fire Chief, and the Deputy Police Chief. Those are all existing people. The Deputy Transportation and Engineering Director position is currently vacant. But that also included two new positions that we authorized in, that you all authorized in the budget, and that is the Deputy Community Development Director, as well as the Deputy Water Resources and Sustainability Director. And I'm happy to share with you that the Deputy Community Development Director as of January 1 is our own Brad Medrout. The Deputy Water Resources and Sustainability Director position is currently vacant, but will be hired very soon. So for these existing people in these positions, it's simply a title change. There's no change in their responsibilities. There's no change in their job description. And the reason we went with deputy is because there were a couple of departments where that word in their industry made a difference, and was more representative of the position. And so we talked about it as a management team and determined that that was an acceptable naming convention for those types of positions, and that we adopted it then across the board for those different positions. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about that. For clarification purposes, that did not apply to the Assistant City Attorney position, nor to the Assistant City Administrator position, which you have recently approved at the end of 2024. Those remain the same. They're slightly different than the Deputy Director positions. And in this case, we felt like it was important to just maintain those two as they were currently approved. So I'm happy to answer any questions. But with that, that concludes my presentation.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The only question I have, Lisa, is does it, Madam Administrator, excuse me, does it change their job description or their salary in any way? Or is it simply just the word?
It is just the word. It does not change their description. And the approval of the salary ranges was all a component of the presentation in the budget proposal. So no change to the dollar amounts, no change to the actual work of the position. It's just simply changing from, for example, Assistant Finance Director to Deputy Finance Director.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, my report is, I haven't had any specific meetings since our last meeting during the holidays. It seems to be pretty slow. Tomorrow, I will be presenting, be participating at the Thurston County Chambers, having all the mayors from the county there. And so we will be doing that. And then later in the month, we will be at the Tom Water Chamber for, and several staff members will be presenting at the Tom Water Chamber. So with that, we will move to council member reports. So Councilmember Kathy, I think I will start with you.
No meetings, no report. Celebrations, but no meetings.
All right. I kind of figured this will be quick tonight. So, Councilmember Dahlha.
Thank you, Mayor. No meetings, no report.
Right. All right. Councilmember Von Hulz.
No meetings, but I did want to mention, I am at the age now where everybody looks like they're in high school. So it looks like we have an audience full of high school students. So I think that's really cool and welcome, and I'm glad to see you all here. Also, the first baby in Thurston County was born to a Tom Water family. So congratulations to the Whittles and their little bundle of joy, little baby girl. And also, 2019 Black Hills High School graduate Xander Brumba was named on Forbes Magazine's 30 Under 30. He's the founder of Gamebees. I don't know what that is, but very cool. Congratulations. Tom Water's doing big things, so.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, I would like to start by saying that Councilmember Kelly Von Hulz, she stole all my thunder. No. But I wanted to acknowledge our special visitors from the local high schools leadership club. And to start off the new year, they want to get involved with us here at the city. So your presence today says a lot. You know, that's rare to have people ready to volunteer. So if you could just stand up so I can see who you are, we can acknowledge you. Don't be shy. Come on, game. If you can stand up. Okay, thank you. Thank you. We appreciate you.
We were not prepped for that. See what happens when you come to a council meeting, right?
So I had two meetings. EMS meeting on 19 December. Highlight was our noncompliance with patient care reporting policy for motor vehicle accidents. So the state requires that we report non-injury patients in motor vehicle accidents. However, our reporting database doesn't recognize non-injury accidents. So we're seeking exception to policy for the first six months of 2025 until we can figure it out. We discussed partnership for opioid use disorder treatment, partnering between Medic One Catholic Community Service and local clinics to provide recovery path for opioid use disorder. There's challenging, challenges and accessing resources for recovery, including limited hours and difficulty reaching clinics. We talked about Suboxone treatment for opioid use disorder, Narcan use, and potential risks of new synthetic opioids like CARF. So there's just many dangerous things out there, and CARF is new to me. Next, we talked about Tom Water, next is Tom Water Hopes. I had another meeting with them, and they have some great things that's upcoming. January 10th, they're going to be involved with our Tom Water Youth Program Night from 6:00 to 9:30 at Bush Middle School. And we're going to be helped hosting karaoke, handing out glow stick to the students, and talk. They hear you campaign materials to families. Also, on January 17th, Tom Water Hopes will be at Youth Program Night Middle School from 6:30 to 9:30, playing dodgeball. Also, they're going to have karaoke, handing out You Can Protect Your Mental Health water bottles for students, and they can take home materials. So we're just starting to get more involved and just get ourselves out there in people faces to let them know that Tom Water, what Tom Water Hopes does in the community. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
I don't know where to start. Well, I didn't have any meeting. Everybody's been home during the holidays. Now they went back to school, and I'm here. I need more vacation time.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no, had no meetings since our last meeting, so I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to shout out to our Public Works Department. During the last storm, I had a tree, one of the street trees in the neighborhood I live in, decided to give up its life. It tipped over, and amazing, opening my blinds and seeing I had branches in my backyard. And so I really appreciate, Public Works were the first ones there. They had me driving by. I think even Alyssa saw it. So I had a couple of the trucks from Public Works there, and it was just great. It was a good experience. Everything worked out. Nothing was damaged. So it turned out real well. But thank you to Public Works.
Great. Thank you. All right. So now we have an executive session this evening, and it involves two items. So we are going to, council will now meet in an executive session to discuss real estate acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.110 sub 1 sub B. And in addition, we will be in executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30. 110 sub I, sub 1 sub I. And how long do you think we're going to be in this, Karen? 15 minutes? Okay. So we will be back at, let's see, 8:20. And so with that, we are recessed. And for those in the audience, you do not have to stay until we're out of this, because we will not be taking any action following the executive session. Thank you. We're in recess. We're in recess. All right, we are back from our executive session. No further action will follow this evening. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.